Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. Would you please stand with us as we have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge Allegiance?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any, as we move on to item two, is there any changes, amendments, or additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have one. We're pulling item 10.03 for no action.
Okay.
I wanted to pull 8.06, 8.07, and 9.03.
8.06, 8.07, and 9.03?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Superintendent, approval of the minutes?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop, November 5th, 2018, and the regular School Board Meeting, November 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. Moving forward with the representation, District Spotlight, Community Service, Sherri Owens, Community Officer.
And filling in for Sherri tonight is Ms. Amani Williams, who is actually your filmer and editor and the voice you hear behind all these great videos that we've seen. And she's going to be highlighting tonight's, okay, not the editing, but it is her voice that we've enjoyed as we're highlighting tonight's community service projects.
Lake County School District is a place where our students are always learning and growing into the leaders of tomorrow. As we work toward becoming a destination district, we are ensuring that every student graduates college and career-ready. But we also want our students to be community-ready. And that means giving back to help those in need and to thank those who have been supportive of our mission. Many of our students regularly participate in community service projects. In this district spotlight, we will highlight just a few of them. Fourth grade students at Seminole Springs Elementary School complete a service project every month. Last month, they visited residents of the Pendry State's Assistant Living Facility to play games and participate in other activities with them.
Service projects, I think, are very important for my students because I want them to learn to give back to the community.
What I like best about doing service projects is that we get to get all, like, interactive with people I don't know. And we do this monthly, and we voted, and this one won.
Older people don't have a lot of kids around because they have to have special care since they're older. And I think it makes them feel better because they don't get to see little kids every day. They don't get to play around like they used to.
Oh, it's wonderful. They're so enthusiastic that they make me bubble. They just like being a part of everything we're doing. You know, I think they'll do this more often when they see how good it was for us as well as the children. I think they're enjoying helping us learn about them and what they're doing. I definitely hope that you'll be able to do this again. It's good for them and it's good for us.
Earlier this month, students from the Leesburg High School Construction Academy partnered with Habitat for Humanity. They've been learning in the classroom to build fencing, a wheelchair ramp, and a deck for elderly residents in Yalahe. The students improve their skills while the residents get some much-needed home improvements. Everybody wins when service is the motivation. Just in time for Thanksgiving, students at Taveri's High School prepared a special dinner to serve to their friends through the Best Buddies Program. Best Buddies is a program that fosters friendships between those who have disabilities and those who do not. It helps break through social barriers at an important time in a young person's life. The dinner was the students' way of thanking their buddies for their friendship and acceptance. Also this month, avid students from Eustis Middle School raised $500 to buy collars, harnesses, and bulletproof vests for Lake County Sheriff's Office Deputy Dogs.
So we decided to do this, I think, because mainly when we had our police dog come in to visit us, we had realized that they didn't have any vests to protect them from guns and stuff. So we decided to start raising money by doing candy grams to help get vests for them, bulletproof vests.
It just, it means a lot. I mean, it's hard to put it into words. You know, these dogs are our best friends at work. They are our partners. They are what means the world to us when we're working. So for other people to see that and help us with that, it means the world to us. I'm not sure exactly where to start with that. There's so many things that we can use it for, and that's, I'm going to leave it up to somebody else to make the decision on where it goes and how. But there's so many things that we can use this money to benefit the dogs.
So I teach the kids that, you know, yeah, test scores are important and the grades are important, but I wanted to go outside of the four walls of the classroom and try to teach them important life lessons about giving back to the community and showing them that that's what it's all about.
Lake County Schools is the destination district for providing students with individual opportunities to excel. Stay tuned for the next district spotlight where we will continue shining a light on what makes Lake great.
Excellent. Thank you. Once again, a great presentation. All right. Public input. And at this point in the meeting, the board will hear comments and concerns from the citizens. If the concern raised is not on the agenda, action will not be taken by the board. If a response is needed, the superintendent may have staff contact the citizen. By the contact information they provided, public comment shall be limited to three minutes per person. We have two input cards this evening, and the first one is Mr. Stuart Clapp from the LCEA.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board members. Congratulations on your election, Mr. Gable.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about, a few weeks back, you talked NEOLA and some of the policies. I wondered if you'd had a chance to read any. I'm passing around a list from the National Labor Relations Board on mandatory subjects of bargaining. And on the other side is a potential list from NEOLA, from their policies, of things that probably should be discussed. My favorite, I have lots of favorites, is the policy on whistleblower protection. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it. So if I have a, want to be a whistleblower against my principal, I go to the superintendent. Makes sense? Then the superintendent tells my principal, and I have to write the principal a statement. And then if that statement is deemed by somebody to be false or misleading, I can be terminated. But there's no retaliation. But that really doesn't matter in Florida anyway because with annual contracts, at the end of the school year, I cannot be renewed for any purposes, mentioned or not. So is it retaliation or whatever? That's just one example of a policy that doesn't really make sense. It says whistleblower protection. There's no protection in that policy whatsoever. So I think that some of these policies need to be read through. I know over the years, you as a school board have crafted policies based on public input, staff input, your own input. The NEOLA, what they presented is a complete rewrite, in some cases ignoring what has historically been done in Lake County. And so I just wanted to caution you on that. Other than that, I don't have anything else right now. Hope you all had a great holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Schreffler. And sir, as you come in, I'll just let you know, the board will not be commenting anything about anything that you'll be discussing because it involves a student. But I would suggest that maybe after the meeting that you get with the superintendent or designate of hers to discuss this further. And you may want to do that versus speaking out this evening because that would be the avenue to really to go in this matter. But you're free to speak for three minutes, but I just, I don't know if that's something that you want to put out there.
In which case, at this moment, to best of my knowledge, I was referred to the Regional Superintendent's Office to where the answer that I got, if that's who I was referred to, wasn't of the right answer that I'm looking for in the first place. In which case, I've been around in these circles with you guys many times in the past 10 years or so with my children over different subjects that we've ran around, we bumped heads on, and my only answer is I have to come up here and address all of you. So again, I'm here to address the issue. I've got three generations of kids that have been in Taveri's District. I'm not in the Taveri's Zone at the moment. Due to my son's relocation, which was against an original court order which got changed due to a DCF case against myself, said I was substance abusive and I beat them in the case.
Are we on the clock?
In which case, nonetheless, in those changing of documents where the mother received full custody, it didn't have the specification for him to remain in this district where we've always been. I'm coming back to the district, and they're looking for my address now, which I can't furnish them because I'm currently in that area to be able to help support him.
Right.
And the new orders have came back through where they're recommending him come back here to the area. He's at Treadway, ended up getting put on ESC classes. We transferred him out of there to Taveri's to finish his years up. All his friends and everybody are up here in the area. His sister is a class, a cross-country runner at Taveri's High School. She's graduating, going to Tennessee this year. He's looking forward to follow in her footsteps. He knows Coach Von Maxie from up to down, April as well. This is his home.
Yes, sir.
And he wants to come back.
Okay. Like I said, after the meeting, if you will get with the superintendent or one of her appointees, and they can direct you in the right path to, can go into this and look into it further.
Can we give him his card? Because this card doesn't have any contact information. If you could put a phone number on here and get that back to Ms. Painter, we'll have somebody contact you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. I'm not comfortable with the superintendent meeting with somebody after a board meeting.
He's going to give the contact information to Ms. Painter now, and we'll contact him. Yeah, thank you.
All righty. That's all the public input we have. Attorney reports, Mr. Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Unfinished business, there is none. New business as we move forward. Superintendent, your recommendations?
I recommend approval of items 8.01 to 8.05, 8.08. And I can't see the number, to 9.02, 9.04 to 10.02, and 10.04 to 10.09.
All right, you've heard the superintendent's recommendations. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. All right, we have, first one that was pulled was 8.06.
Yes. I pulled this because I would just like an update on the Chromebook implementation. Is Mr. Weeks here? And he is here, and he's prepared to give you an update on the Chromebook rollout.
Good evening. So this time last year, when we were talking, we had 300 Chromebooks in the district. When I got the chance to talk to you in April, we had about 2,600 Chromebooks. This next number may floor you, or if you've talked to me, you might know it. Right now, either ordered or arrived, and there's very few that are just in the pipeline, we have 13,076 Chromebooks. So the project actually has been driven mostly by school demand. Of those Chromebooks, as far as the expanding Student Technology Access part of our program where we're going to those high schools, we've purchased about 3,500 of those Chromebooks. So most of those have been schools kind of sort of fueling that growth. And so I will say this, is that it's a little bit of a logistical miracle to get 13,000 devices in. The great thing about these devices is IT, and I know Dr. Wheeler's team is pretty happy, doesn't touch them, they get drop shipped to the school, they come out of the box, and they're not imaged or anything like that. They already have asset tags on them, they're good to go. And so that part has been pretty good. It's also been possible with a lot of collaborations from other departments. But kind of turning our attention to the two ambitious projects over this first part of the semester, which were basically trying to get a device in the hands of every student at two high schools, that came pretty quick. And so, you know, the summer evaporates pretty fast, and Taveri's went about a week into school, which is a challenging time to launch anything. But we did deliver about 1,356 Chromebooks over a short period of time. Again, the faculty, the staff, the administration was very, very supportive of that. And we have to thank Dr. Boyd and Mr. Glass for really helping us with that. We then, a couple of weeks later, went to Mount Dora, and so we're kind of finishing that implementation up right now. Both of them have high adoption rates. Taveri's high is probably around 94% to 95%. And we kind of sort of bridged the gap with lunar devices, and we have a new initiative that we're going to kind of sort of try to bridge the gap for the 3% or 4% that don't. And then Mount Dora, even though the project is relatively young, is sitting at about 87% as of this afternoon. And we watch those metrics like hawks because, I don't know, it's like a game show to us where we're like, do we get another percent today? Because it's just part of how that works. We're turning our attention to Umatilla High School and Eustis High. And so what's kind of interesting about that is that with this threshold, we actually were able to order about 2/3 of the devices for Eustis High, and then we hit the threshold. And part of that has been, again, because that accelerated demand from the other schools has been very welcome. But I will say that in all the times I've seen these type of projects unfurl, a little unexpected as far as just the rapid growth. But for the most part, people seem to be pretty happy. I would like to speak for a second about one thing that I think is important, though. If you put 13,000 devices in there, then you are starting to shift instruction in some ways. And one of the things that we've been trying to do is best you can, and to be honest with you, I think we've had a lot of buy-in and a lot of success from the teachers. Originally, as you can imagine, teachers may be a little nervous about like, hey, we're really all about this authentic literacy, it's reading, thinking, talking, and writing, and is this another thing that comes in from the side and kind of diverts from that? And honestly, we have worked very, very hard with Dr. Wisekoff's team and also had the chance to model it in front of principals where that authentic literacy can be digital. And what I mean by that is it's not just digital reading. The best lessons we've seen have been these hybrid lessons where they're reading just good old-fashioned text, but they're using the device for what it's good for, which is the ability to collaborate and really work together. And so I feel like it does have a solid instructional soul that matches the instructional initiatives of the district. One thing that I did, based on kind of some questions that have come up, is that you might be wondering, out of all these devices, how many get broken? Right? Like, that's a fair question. One of the funniest stories was, is that we actually had a device that somebody had turned into the switchboard that was found outside the courthouse on the road abandoned. Luckily, what had happened is some poor student had put it on their truck, drove off, right? And it was like the first week. Device still worked, returned it to the student, had a slight scrape on the hinge of the device, but for whatever reason, it was like a little tank and just kept going. So we're kind of laughing at that. However, if you have the right technique, you can break a screen. And so out of the 13,000 devices or so, we're looking at, right now, probably about 45 broken screens. And this is a shift, right? Because these devices are mobile. And a device that goes home, by the nature of it, is going to have a little bit more of that. So right now, we're looking at about 45 broken screens, which, if you look at the combination, you think about all those devices going home, I mean, you're talking almost 3,000 devices. It's a pretty small percentage. However, we watch that very, very carefully. We had looked, you know, at insurance policies and stuff like that. None of it financially made sense. And with procurement's help, the price of a screen was $95 for replacement. It can be replaced in about five minutes, it's not very hard. We got it down to $53, and then today, we got it down to $45. So we do feel like we're putting all pressure that we can on the vendors and working with them to get the price down as much as possible. So like, all in all, I think the project has gone very, very well. The last thing I would say is that the board did approve a product known as Go Guardian a little bit ago. And part of what Go Guardian does is it helps us find lost devices. And so we've had about 18 devices declared lost, and right now, we only have about five or six that are sitting unrecovered. And most of them are, as you expect, mix-ups, like somebody accidentally grabbed somebody's Chromebook or something like that. But that has definitely helped in the theft. So all in all, I think the logistics are pretty much in check. I think we have a really, really good instructional soul to the project, and we're looking forward to doing the next two schools and then taking a bit of a break for personnel because it's been a pretty, been a pretty decent dash, so.
Sounds intense.
Yep.
Could I ask you a question? You and I, when you and I met just before the rollout, we spoke about accessibility of those kids that don't have internet connection. And you mentioned some kind of hotspot or.
I did. It's got the most bizarre name of all time, it's called a Kajit. And so we got one in, we tested it. And one of the things that the folks did from Kajit that was very, very helpful is they gave us a whole white paper basically on funding sources that you can use. And so we're starting to investigate what that looks like. And just to explain the initiative, what it is, is that it is a hotspot that is filtered that could potentially go home as a checkout for the student. The Chromebooks offer offline capability. You can actually do good chunks of like documents and all that kind of stuff offline, even though it's, its best is an internet-driven device. But we were looking, based on Mr. Mathias's and some other feedback from stakeholders, the ability to be able to check those out, take them home. And the price is there for sure, and we're kind of, we'll work through the negotiation of that. But the technical test was very successful. And so like, I think if we can get that and some funding sources in line, because at some particular point, pretty soon, we're going to use, Title I money might be something that's an option, we'll work with, you know, the instructional stakeholders to decide. But that's exciting because that's a digital divide that's existed for a long time, and honestly, everybody's looked at it, and not many people have really done much with it yet, so.
Okay.
Good deal.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent?
All right. I am recommending approval of item 8.06, procurement of Chromebooks for the expansion of the Digital Discovery Classroom.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. All right. 8.07?
I pulled 8.07 because it's reported that we're getting it from the millage funds, which aren't available yet. So I was a little confused on where we're actually funding these from.
And Mr. Carr is not here tonight, so Mr. Ward's going to speak to that.
Yes, ma'am. That would not be the .75 millage. That is our mill and a half that we've already approved and are already receiving.
Oh, okay. I was curious. Okay. I thought it was the safety money.
Is that all you have?
Yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
All right. I recommend approval of the purchase of the White Fleet vehicles for the Safety and Security Department.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second by Mr. Dodd this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you. 9.03, Dr. Burns?
Okay, so 9.03, I pulled because this is essentially a staffing raise. I think that all of our employees are, should be well compensated for their work. However, we didn't, I don't even think we gave teachers a 3% raise this year. And this is a 3% raise for the professional managerial employees. And I don't know the whole picture right now for our funding for teachers and support staff. So I don't know if we should table this and bring it back? When we have like a picture, like, I don't have a picture.
This was a carryover from the last, the raises that we got. This is the last group who had not received any additional compensation and one that we discussed during executive session, that we would provide some compensation for. I know Mr. Farnsworth could absolutely speak to this and is prepared to do so. If you'd like for him to elaborate a little bit on it.
Yes, this is, as we've gone through the process, this is one of the groups from the executive session that we discussed. Last time this particular group received a compensation increase was 2015. And this, as you see the amount there, you're dealing with a much smaller group of employees there. Traditionally, going back, looking, there was 3.5% in some of the years past. 3% is usually the, kind of been the standard rate that is budgeted for whenever things were moving forward in the past. Obviously, teachers are compensated in a different way through performance pay. So when you're looking at like SEIU or non-bargain employees, things like that, 3% is kind of the number that's around. And this is, this is what we had discussed in executive session. But as far as why it's coming after all of this is because we wanted to first process in the order of ratification of the employees under contract and make sure all their funds and raises were processed and available to them first. So we went SEIU, and then we went with LCEA. And now this is the last batch. I think it was reported in error in one of the news outlets months ago that whenever we did the SEIU and exempt employees, that that was the last batch that was coming through, and that was actually an error. I think whenever they, whenever they saw exempt, maybe they got confused because these are non-union employees also kind of like exempt. And I wanted to do a traditionally, roll the same groups traditionally to go that we always have, but then when you go back and look, there were times where exempt went with SEIU, there were times when they went with professional managerial. So I elected to put them in with the SEIU folks and then process these people last. And that's where we're at now. So this wraps us up for that.
And I know in years past, it has been that whatever SEIU got as a percentage is pretty much what carried over into this category as well. It wasn't that they got more of a percentage or anything, so.
And I thought we talked about it. This is something that we spoke about whenever we were.
All right.
Maybe it just, yeah. Well, it's so just, it seems disconnected.
And it's been so long, and it was budgeted for.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Superintendent?
Recommend approval of 9.03, compensation for professional managerial employees.
So moved. Second.
Did you motion?
I made a motion and second.
Did you get who made the motion? Ms. Luke?
No, it wasn't Ms. Luke.
Oh, who was it? Oh. It was too close. Dr. Burns, I'm sorry. And Mr. Mathias seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? And that was a aye, by the way. All right, moving on to item 11, there's discussion, then now the superintendent, superintendent's report?
Just really one thing to highlight tonight, since our video did a great job of capturing some of the more recent events that we've had going on, but also, probably still Mr. Mathias's thunder a little bit about the Festival of Trees that took place this weekend. He kind of helped with that, so I will let him elaborate on it. But what an exciting way to engage the community and highlight our art programs, every school having a tree to be able to decorate, and just the excitement from the students as well as the adults contributing to this project. So if you haven't seen it, you want to head out to Lake Square Mall, and you want to bid on one of the lovely trees that were decorated by one of our different groups of students, looking out there, showcasing their artistic talents and creativity, as well as the money coming back to our music and art programs, every bit of it that is raised from the bidding of the trees. So it's for a great cause, so we hope everybody will go out and bid and bid high for our kids. With that, I will move on to whichever way you'd like to go, Mr. Chair.
We will go, you have no letters of condolence?
We have no letters of condolence.
Board member comments?
Okay. I think we have a letter of condolence for a retired employee. Deanne Carter worked with our district for over 30 years, and her dad passed away.
Okay.
It's not Carter, it's Wilson, Deanne Wilson. Her dad's, her maiden name is Carter.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got a note of that. Thank you for letting us know.
Ms. Luke?
Okay. I actually wrote down the Festival of Trees as well, so I won't expound, except to say that I got to go and look around at the trees. And in addition to what the superintendent said, is that it just, you know, when I was in school here 10 years ago, thank you, I heard somebody laugh, that was a joke, the mall was very vibrant. Like, that's where we kind of went to hang out. It was super fun, and so it's kind of nice to see the rejuvenation that it's gotten. And the trees looked very festive at the mall, and it was really nice to walk around and see which trees were done by which students, and their mascots were all over in their colors. And so it was really, really nice. So I know you know them personally, but just thank them. And welcome back from Thanksgiving break. I hope everybody had a nice holiday, and I know that this morning was a little rough in the Luke house, so I'm sure it was around the district to get up and be back in a routine. And so welcome back for a couple more weeks, anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
Well, I think I shared last go-around that Commissioner Sean Parks and I were holding our most recent installment of the Coffee and Conversations. And so special thanks to.
Okay. I think we have a letter of condolence for a retired employee. Deanne Carter worked with our district for over 30 years, and her dad passed away.
Okay.
It's not Carter, it's Wilson, Deanne Wilson. Her dad's, her maiden name is Carter.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got a note of that. Thank you for letting us know.
Miss Luke?
Okay. I actually wrote down the Festival of Trees as well, so I won't expound, except to say that I got to go and look around at the trees. And in addition to what the superintendent said, is that it just, you know, when I was in school here 10 years ago, thank you, I heard somebody laugh, that was a joke, the mall was very vibrant, like, that's where we kind of went to hang out. It was super fun, and so it's kind of nice to see the rejuvenation that it's gotten. And the trees looked very festive at the mall, and it was really nice to walk around and see which trees were done by which students, and their mascots were all over in their colors, and so it was really, really nice. So I know you know them personally, but thank them. And welcome back from Thanksgiving break. I hope everybody had a nice holiday, and I know that this morning was a little rough in the Luke House, so I'm sure it was around the district to get up and be back in a routine, and so welcome back for a couple more weeks, anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
Well, I think I shared last go-around that Commissioner Sean Parks and I were holding our most recent installment of the Coffee and Conversations. And so special thanks to the folks over at World Class Tycoon Doan Clermont, who hosted that for us. It was full of, full of some exciting conversation, I'll tell you. And thinking about where we were as a district four years ago, there are some topics where I felt like I wouldn't have had an answer for some of the, some of the questions that came up. But there, this past week, we talked about all the great new opportunities that exist in our district, especially those that, that challenge students, that help them explore new career paths. And I think there was a newfound sense of optimism among the group that attended that, that previously, there were some schools in the district where people would go, oh, I don't know. But I said, no, 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 listen this. We've got a construction academy, we've got now Health Sciences Collegiate Academy, we've got an ACE program going, and we've got these AP capstone programs. And there was so much to talk about that didn't previously exist. And so for that, it was very exciting and refreshing coffee and conversation, and I think that people are pretty pleased with the work that we've put in so far. And then also, with the new seating assignments, sitting, going back to the seat helps me kind of reminisce about four years ago, when I, when I had this, this seat, when I first entered onto the board, and hearing about the Chromebooks was actually a bit refreshing for me, because those that were on the campaign trail with me four years ago, knew that one of the highlights of my speech was, was about how frustrated I was every time I tried to put a student on a computer, or I'd try to get on a computer and it wouldn't work. And I said the district needed some sort of solution to combat that, and it was, it was, you know, seemingly out of our reach, that it would be too expensive. And so I'm really optimistic to see that we've got something in place now. When we talk about 13,000 new devices, that's, that's really nothing to sneeze at. And that's, that's a lot of progress, suddenly, and I'm thrilled, so keep up the great work.
Mr. Mathias?
So I will begin with speaking about the Festival of Trees, and, and that I had the pleasure of representing the board at the lighting of the lights, and 49 trees. 49, pretty amazing. And it speaks to the spirit of our teachers, and it speaks to the spirit of our students, but mostly, it speaks to the spirit of the superintendent, who as a goal, wanted art and music in all of our elementary. And so I'll tell a story. Dr. Anna Marie, who's doing the marketing, shared with me that, that when she had this idea, and I said, that's a perfect fit for us to do, to really highlight our first year of having art. So we'll do 20 trees. And she goes, I want to offer it countywide. So she reached out to Sherry Owens, to Meadowland High School, to Sherry Owens and Norice Agayo, who coordinated the, reaching out to our teachers, and the coordination of getting the trees, decorations to the mall. And, and you see it in the face of the teachers that participated, you see it in the faces of the kids that were there when they lit the, the big Christmas tree. And you walk around, and you genuinely see the talent of our kids, and it's pretty exciting. And with that said, the trees are out for bid. All of the money goes to the respective, through the Education Foundation, and will be returned for the program support. And there's an awful lot of trees at this point that haven't got a bidder, that haven't bid. The bidding starts at $25, you get the tree, you get the lights, and you get these amazing decorations. So that's my plug. So you have until December 9th. It is a silent auction, so you go and just write your name and contact, and, and I put my phone number down, which I, now I'm getting these weird calls, but other than that part, I wouldn't worry about it.
Where do you put the, I didn't, I mean, the trees themselves don't...
So they have, on a table in front of the trees, they have a clipboard with like a numbering thing. Now, at one point, Anna Marie said today, she was thinking about changing it, where you would go to one spot and put a tree, and put it in a bucket. But I, I said, I like the idea of the clipboard, because you can kind of see who's bidding and where it stands. And you write people's phone numbers down and call them at midnight.
That's a brilliant idea.
Also, also, just as a plug, and it's own, the mall is now has new ownership, and Mere, who's the owner of the mall, really enjoys supporting our kids. So I think that, that we deserve to support those vendors then, those merchants that are at the mall. So when you're there, buy local. And life lesson, my son was there looking for a watch, and we went to the jewelry store, and my son has the iPhone out, and he's looking it up, and he goes, Dad, it's $20 cheaper colored it online. I said, but son, you keep this person working, and you keep that shop open. So let's remember that when, when you get ready to order something on the internet, versus that merchant who, who supports our community and is there 365 days a year. And with that said, that's my report on the trees. So go see the trees, bid on the trees. We love the trees. The end.
Dr. Burns?
We do love the trees. And I enjoyed, I got to see some of them, so it was really cool. I mostly wanted to wish, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I really appreciated the community service that our children are doing. I think that's a great part of learning, and thank you for bringing that out, and so that we all know about it, and that we're doing, I think we're doing even more of it than we were. I will be going to FSBA tomorrow, and I'll represent you all proudly, and give you a report when I come back, so it's going to be a busy week, so.
It's in Tampa?
It's in Tampa, yeah.
All right. Just a reminder, December 4th is the reception for the essay winners at the Daily Commercial in Leesburg. I saw Don today, December 4th, and he was reminding me, and I said, well, I have a conflict. I'm supposed to be somewhere at the same time in Taveri's, because Taveri's High School Holiday Chorus is going on with the band. So he told me that, he promised me that he would get me in and out quick, so I could get back over, so I'll just have to tell the chorus director and the band director I'll be a little late.
What time is that?
It's at 6 o'clock.
I'll be in Philadelphia.
Again?
You just love the snow.
All right. And also, I went and visited, represented, I guess you might say, this Dirty Dog Farms, I think is what it's called. And it's where they tried to bring the farm and the garden center to the schools, and they've incorporated into the elementary schools, and also into the culinary arts at some of our high schools, Eustis High School and Leesburg High School, where they're doing, the chefs and the, and the students were there doing the preparation of the food. From that particular garden, they're on site that evening, and they're trying to raise funding, and from all that was there and participated and other donations they received, was a little bit over $4,000.